And passes unanimously on to the minutes of December 8, 2020, I believe we were all in attendance. Are there any questions or comments or or changes to those suggested amendments to those minutes? If not, I would be looking for a motion to approve.
Commissioner Lewis, to approve.
Let me hear.
Was that Commissioner Beloga?
I, this is Commissioner Lewis, I move to approve.
Commissioner Olson, seconds.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Olson. We'll now do the roll call vote. Beloga? Can we hear from Beloga?
Can you hear me? Hi?
Hi? Hukim?
Hi.
Lewis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Thorson is an aye. A motion to approve the minutes passes. On to organizational business. The 2020 budget adjustment. Could we have the staff report, please?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Thorson, members of the Commission, Erica Coleman, HRA Administrator. What we have today is the HRA is required to make budget adjustments, which more closely reflect the actual 2020 revenues and expenditures. The requested adjustments are shown in the highlighted area of attached budget sheets. We can go through that if you would like. We are looking for a motion to approve the HRA budget adjustment for 2020. We can go through the highlighting areas of the attached budget sheet as well as the accountant to answer any questions that I may not be able to answer. So.
I would, I would suggest we go through the highlights.
No problem. So in the attached, the first highlighted budget adjustment is to the general fund, and it is for the line items of audit and legal. For the line item of audit, there was an increase in the budget adjustment of $3,000, excuse me. And for legal, an increase in the amount of $33,000. There's an extra zero there. It's just a typo. The comma is correct. It's $33,000. Just wanted to call that out. This is due to development and a need for general, for legal services. For the next highlighted item is development, and an increase of $801,000 from the Met Council grants for the Knox and American development. Increase for the other revenue line item, which is $40,000, which includes the TIF application fees. So the application fees that we accept for the TIF project, it goes into other revenue under the development, development budget, portion of the budget. We have under expenses, legal. So there is an increase of $26,500 in development for legal. Under professional services, other, an increase of $700,000 for Knox and American draws. Again, this is the development expenses that go with, go into the project. Property management, increase of $811,000. $534,000 obligation to Knox and American, $275,000 as interest reserve. So I just, again, will stress that there is a lot that goes into the development and for Knox and American in particular, being more of a complex development. That is where we're seeing these increases. And also to recognize that we are conservative in the projections that are the forecasting that is done. And therefore, we bring about the budget adjustments later after we have had actual numbers. And you'll see a little bit different as we move forward. Property taxes, the last highlighted item, is an increase of $6,100. And so the inter-fund transfer out, inter-fund transfers out, which is money is held in this development, development fund, but is transferred out for specific items, is an increase of $135,479.83. And that is the, for the Village Club project, debt service payment. So part of our, our bonds. Thank you. Next, we have Section 8 vouchers, Fund H211. That is, again, with our federal requirements for Section 8, we have legal, an increase of $215. Professional services, an increase of $1,900. That was for the intelligir. And then housing assistance, that is the HAP, the Housing Assistance Program, Housing Assistance Payments Received, an increase of $288,000. This is where I had stated that we are conservative in our forecasting, and we do not know for sure what we will receive in far, as far as allocation from HAP. So we're very conservative. And so we were under. And so it's an increase of $288,000 for HAP received. And then mobile device service, an increase of $1,600. And then internal print shop charges, we had an increase of $1,200 for the home improvement fair, for materials, for print materials. The next is the rehab, housing rehabilitation and CDBG rehab loan program. So we overforecasted and for our, this project, excuse me, for this program in particular. So it's a decrease of $307,000. We received fewer repayments on the CDBG loans repayment. So that is where we overforecasted. And so that's why that's a decrease. And then in the CDBG lead paint, we have a decrease of $6,000 where less testing was completed than what we had forecasted. Scrolling down to housing rehabilitation, the neighborhood, the fair housing and the curb appeal loans, we have for legal, an increase $7,000, which are contracts and document review for the full year. So for 2020. Advertising others, so it was print shop before, so printed materials, this is advertising, an increase of $1,400 for the home improvement fair that took place in 2020 in February. The mailroom, we had an increase in $7,300, again, for the home improvement fair for mailing things, for postage and whatnot. And then internal print shop charges, so internally for signs and materials, increase of $1,100 for the home improvement fair. And meals and refreshments, an increase of $900 for the home improvement fair. The next highlighted section is the assisted rental. And for professional services, there is an increase in $198,000. This was the service agreement that we did with Veep for, for emergency rental assistance. This was at the beginning of COVID, but before the CARES Act funding. Property license fees, an increase of $2,600. And property taxes for our, for our properties that are, we own, an increase of $18,500. Excuse me, not that we own, but an increase in taxes, sorry. And then the rental housing, the homeowner, so this is for future homeowners, we have under property license fees, an increase of $2,700. And property taxes, an increase of $9,500. And that concludes the highlighted portions of the, I'm sorry, one last thing. The home improvement portion, we had a decrease of $7,000 under home improvement in the rental housing for future home buyers. So we did not need to spend as much as was forecasted for improving the properties that we own for that program. So it's a decrease of $7,000. That concludes the highlighted portions, and I am available to stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. I'm curious, although it's not a great deal of money, about the mobile device service. It looks like maybe the previous budget was zero or thereabouts. Print is very small. And I'm curious if that's like, you know, we had in addition of, is this for mobile phone service, or?
That's, thank you, Chair Thorson. That is correct. I think Brian Hartman is actually able to go into depth in that question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Erica. Yes, due to the pandemic and people working remotely, we had the need to add mobile phones to our staff for our Section 8 program and our rehab program. So, and myself and for the administrator. So the HRA previously never had any HRA issued mobile phones. But now with the pandemic, it's been very important that people have that, especially those with spotty internet service, so they can create a hotspot off their phone to run their laptop too, so they can get their work done. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, we can expect this to be an ongoing expense, I take it?
Thank you, Chair Thorson. We can expect this to be somewhat of an ongoing expense, depending on how long the pandemic lasts and with the opportunity for more flexible work arrangements.
If I may add, Mr. Chair, we got the phones for free. There were iPhone 8s, so we didn't go with the, the brand new phones. So we got the phones for free. And this is just the, the monthly service fees that you see reflected there.
Great, thank you. Our Commissioners, are there any other questions of staff regarding budget adjustments?
Mr. Chair, John Olson?
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. I realize that we've got a lot of variables here, and so predicting next year is just not a decent, appropriate question. But I'm just wondering, we had a, quite a bit of time and public input regarding the budget. And I'm just wondering if there's kind of an outline about how future deliberations about 2021 will be involving things that affect us. I mean, the federal government and that kind of stuff. I mean, that's beyond the city. But just wondering if you can make a general process, a comment about what, what the city council is, is looking at process-wise?
Thank you, Chair Thorson. Thank you for the question, Commissioner Olson. As far as process-wise, what the city council is looking at, I'm not exactly sure how to answer your question. Because in terms of the 2021 budget, we've already brought that forward and had that approved. So is there something in particular that I could expound upon? Or, because I'm not quite sure how to answer that.
Well, and I understand that. But, but so, given the uniqueness of this past year and the next year anticipated, is there a plan to do any formal, large-scale discussion about us planning ahead in, in terms of HRA? What we get from the city is relatively small compared to the feds. So I'll leave it as a rhetorical question for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair Thorson, Commissioner Olson. Yes, to answer your question, I want to go ahead and provide a response. We are looking at, in our strategic planning session to coming up, to have more of a basis and a focus on what we will be looking forward to do. And from there, we will look at other ways of growing our resources of funding for the work of the HRA. So not just dependent on the levy or the current funds that we have, but looking at how we can grow the funding for the work that we are doing.
Commissioner Olson, does that satisfy your question?
Yes, thank you. I think one of the issues that is kind of on the, on dog paddling mode right now is promoting the, the OHO trust funds. And I think we just need to be always on the lookout. There's a lot of awareness of, of the shortage of affordable housing. And in many respects, there are many that are doing well in, in the, the economic environment, those at least that are reflected in the stock market. And so I don't want to miss an opportunity to be asking when, when the awareness is high and potentially, for some, certainly not a lot of small businesses, or in fact, some going out of business. But, but I just want to keep that on our, on our table. So when you talk about seeking more funding, let's, let's be looking at the trust funds as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Are there any other questions of staff on this item? Please chime in if you have any other questions. I see everyone. I try to scroll back and forth. Are there any other questions? If not, we'd be looking for a motion on this item.
Chair Thorson?
Commissioner Hukim?
I make a motion to approve the HRA budget adjustments for 2020.
Commissioner Lewis, second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Hukim, second by Lewis. I will do a roll call vote. Commissioner Beloga? Commissioner Beloga?
Can you hear me?
Anyone, anyone here, Commissioner Beloga?
I, I did.
I heard him.
Okay, Commissioner Beloga is an aye. Commissioner Hukim?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
And Thorson is an aye. Motion passes unanimously. On to item 4.2, officer election procedure, I believe. Could we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Olson, or excuse me, Chair Thorson, I'm sorry. Thank you, Erica Coleman. So at the December 8 meeting, commission meeting, the Commissioners requested information regarding which other city commission utilizes a private ballot system when electing officers. So the following, we provided a following summary for the procedure used by each city commission. First, the Advisory Board of Health, they do voice nominations and votes at the annual meeting through motions. The Charter Commission does voice nominations and votes at the annual meeting through motions. The Creative Placemaking Commission has a ballot, private nominations and voting. The Human Rights Commission has a ballot, private nominations and voting. Parks, Arts and Rec Commission has a voice nominations and votes at the annual meeting through motions. The Planning Commission, voice nominations at the prior meeting and slate presented, and slate presented at meeting and private poll done via paper votes, paper ballots, or WebEx polling. So using the WebEx system, there's an option to do polling that's anonymous. The Sustainability Commission uses private nomination and ballot. And the Port Authority uses voice nomination and votes at the annual meeting through motions. Based on this information, staff is recommending that the HRA Commission incorporate a formal election process into the bylaws at a meeting in the near future, and that the process consists of an anonymous nomination and ballot procedure. Staff is recommending that the procedure for 2021 be as follows. That one, nominations will be conducted via a WebEx poll at the February 9, 2021, HRA Commission meeting. Commissioners will be asked to add their name or the name of a member they would like to nominate to any officer position. The next step would be the results of the poll will be presented during the meeting. Then Commissioners nominated for officer positions will be asked if they accept the nomination. Following those Commissioners accepting the nomination will be added to the slate and nominations will be closed. The slate will be included in the packet of the February 23, 2021, HRA Commission meeting. And at the February 23, 2021, meeting, another WebEx poll will be conducted to vote for each officer. Thereby, the result of the poll will be presented during the meeting. A motion to approve each officer will be made, and the officer will take over the position after being sworn in at the annual meeting. The outgoing chair or vice chair will read the oath of office to each new officer at the March 9, 2021, annual meeting. And new officers will conduct the annual meeting after being sworn in. And so with that, I can stand for any questions. But the, there's a difference in requested action, because it's what you will choose this evening. A motion to approve the recommended procedure for election of HRA Commission officers and recommend this procedure be incorporated into the HRA bylaws. Or, if changes are made to the procedure, motion to approve the recommended procedure with changes for election of the HRA Commission officers and recommend this procedure be incorporated into the HRA bylaws. So that was a lot. So we might, you might want to discuss it or ask some questions.
Chair Thorson here. I, I'm wondering, there's, there's quite a slate of changes that are recommended here by staff. And you indicated you've gone through and looked at what, looked at what other commissions have done, and then drew the conclusion that this is, that drew the conclusion that the recommendations you're making are correct. It sounded like based upon what other commissions are, are doing. And I see quite a, quite a variation. So I'm just wondering if you can elaborate a little on all the recommendations you're making, 1 through 10. And, you know, to the degree, you know, that, that there is some thought process behind that as it relates in particular to other commissions. And I have some other questions, but I will just ask you kind of just a thought process on it. Because it seems to be, it seems to have been drawn from what other commissions are doing. And then I'll, then I'll ask other Commissioners to chime in. And I may have some other questions after that personally, but.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Thorson, for the question. So previously, in the previous meeting, we had, a staff had brought up around doing more private or anonymous nominations. And then from that conversation was directed by this commission to look at other commissions. And so in the conversations that staff had with liaisons of the other commissions, one found that it was varying between the commissions on a process, but also that it is up for change, as there are some things being reviewed throughout the city on these types of things to be brought to different commissions. And so based on what staff had previously, previously recommended, the conversation and the concerns of the Commissioners, and then looking at the other commissions, our staff is recommending that we go forward with a anonymous, an anonymous nomination process, to not put anyone on the spot. And therefore, to either do it through a paper ballot and/or WebEx polling. And the reason for that is that we will not stay on WebEx forever. We will return to person. And so in returning to person, would like to do anonymous ballot by paper instead of speaking up in person and just saying, I would like to be nominated for this position, or I would like to go for this position, or this person will nominate somebody else. So that is where we're coming to that conclusion from, is thinking forward, thinking about the work that is currently underway throughout the city on a, on a streamlined process, thinking about us being virtual right now, and thinking about us being in person sometime in the near future. And then not putting people on the spot. And so that is how staff has arrived at this recommendation, but it's just a recommendation.
Commissioners, I saw Commissioner Olson's hand.
I'll put mine, too.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very fatigued with how elections in our nation. Not that it's necessarily the same way here, but I just think that that this is actually a refreshing way to, to look at it. And it, you know, the balance that manager Coleman indicated, I think, makes sense to me in terms of responses to your understandable question. So I, I would be in favor of, of doing this. It's something that can be changed in the future, of course, as well. But I just think that it removes some of the, the pressure of one and ones, either to be nominated and, and all that kind of stuff, to just putting everything out there as a, as a possibility until nominations through this process come forwards for a vote. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Did I, was that Commissioner Hukim I heard?
No, Miss, Commissioner Lewis.
Commissioner Lewis, go ahead, please.
Okay, just a couple of comments. Looking at the Planning Commission is doing, I actually would like to know more about what, how the Planning Commission is doing this, because the one thing that I find is that paper nominations are not particularly transparent. I know a lot of people have started to watch our meetings. And I know there's just a certain discomfort when all of a sudden there are nominations for a particular office, and you don't know where it's come from or what's kind of gone behind it. And I don't feel it's transparent as a voice nomination. I think the way the Planning Commission appears to do it is that they do voice nominations at a prior meeting, and then the slate is presented at the meeting, and a private poll is done via paper ballots or WebEx polling. So the vote itself would still be private, which I think is very important, because I mean, that's the way we vote in our elections. But I don't feel that voice nominations particularly don't allow people to speak up if they want in office, or doesn't allow other people to nominate them. This is the way we've done it in the past, and it has not felt uncomfortable. So I'm just throwing that out. I feel like we've complicated the process so much by doing the paper ballots, you know, I mean, the paper nominations. So as I said, I'd like to know more how the Planning Commission, how that's working for them, or if they're considering changing because they don't feel it's appropriate anymore. I feel like they have a particular, they're private, your actual vote is private, but it keeps your nominations open so people know who wants to run and why. Otherwise, I just, you know, if someone's nominated by paper, I, I don't know the process behind it. And sometimes I do like to know that. So that's just my feeling. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lewis. I would add that, you know, in, in voice nominations, however they're done, and whenever they're done, nothing has ever precluded anyone from nominating themselves. And I think that's important to note. Any other Commissioners have comments on this item or questions?
Chair Thorson?
Commissioner Hukim?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I under, I see both sides, but I, I, on the other hand, kind of don't, personally don't mind a paper nomination and the fact that it still will get presented to everybody. And if someone doesn't feel comfortable, they have the right to not accept the nomination. And I think that, I, I just think that. And I think that, I, I just think that if we stay consistent with the, I guess the privacy of it is not such an issue for me because, number one, we don't have a huge board to begin with right now. But it is something that I do feel that I've heard from other commissioners and other boards that, you know, there are some pressures, especially as you get bigger boards and you get people who have maybe been there for a long time and things like that, that I can see it being uncomfortable for some people to maybe make a nomination or, or not go with the flow of things. So I just think that I'm open to the private nomination and the private voting. I think that's based, that's what we do in presidential elections. That's what we do in elections when you, when nominations are happening. So like when we go in for our primaries, it's, it's private. Nobody knows who you're, you know, voting for. So I guess I support that system.
Commissioner Beloga, I believe I saw your hand earlier. Commissioner Beloga, did I see your hand earlier? We'll move on. Commissioner Lewis, did I see you with a, looking to, to make another comment?
Just to make a brief comment, when we vote in a primary, it, it's true, our vote is private, but the nomination process is not private. Not private. So, you know. I'm getting echo, but that's why I looked at the Planning Commission because the Planning Commission apparently does a voice nomination, but a private vote. And that would be very similar to our state and local elections.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Beloga.
Trying again, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. Having some audio problems on this end, so thanks for bearing with me. The, the point I want to make is, is that the City Council has created a strategic plan with six pillars. The last of those being transparency and engagement. And I'm trying to wrap my head around how the privacy issue melds with the transparency. Making this a paper ballot makes the whole process, in my view, and, and let's, let's divide it into two categories. Making the nominations by paper, which I'll call a ballot, ends up being totally non-transparent to the public. And the voting process also makes that non-transparent. So can staff address how they felt that making this proposal achieved that sixth pillar of the strategic plan of the City Council?
Thank you, Chair Thorson. Thank you, Commissioner Beloga. Absolutely. So engagement and transparency obviously can run a wide spectrum depending on who you are speaking with, based on their background and their viewpoints. But I will say this, one thing that is brought into consideration with the current commissions and some of the commissions in particular is that there are commissioners or volunteers who have been on commissions for a very long time, which makes it more uncomfortable to newer commissioners. And so engagement and transparency ends up being two different buckets and not the same bucket. One, engagement would be making sure that we are engaging the current commissioners as well as new commissioners and people feeling welcome to join a commission. Mind you, as you know, nobody outside of the current commissioners can vote for an officer. So the public cannot vote or nominate an officer, obviously, right? Transparency is coming into play of saying, here are who is nominated, not we're going to put Commissioner Lewis on the spot and say, Commissioner Lewis, who would you like to be the next officer? We're not gonna, we're not gonna be transparent in that sense where we're going overboard. We're going to be transparent in saying that out of these, out of those that are nominated by their fellow commissioners, this is who was voted in and it's transparent and we are being clear about the process now, especially bringing it forward and allowing for this body to make an informed decision publicly and then have it be included in the bylaws. Therefore, we are saying here is the, the formal process that we will stick to and that's the transparency of that process.
Commissioner Beloga, did you have further thoughts?
You're on mute, Commissioner Beloga.
Can you hear me again?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Sorry, I didn't realize I had been muted there. We're talking about the HRA Commission and it's good to understand what the companion commissions in the city are doing. I think in, in my focus here, we want to look at HRA. Isn't what our focus is here tonight in this discussion and to design a, you know, a process that works for the HRA rather than any other of the multiple commissions that exist within the city. I see nodding heads, so I think that indicates agreement to those who I can see. The transparency and engagement happens in a couple of different ways in my mind. One is the people who nominate themselves to a board or commission to the City Council for appointment do that as a self-nomination. And then that process is carried out with the highest level of transparency by City Council in reviewing those candidates and ultimately voting by voice throughout the process and arriving at a consensus conclusion and then appointing the successful candidates. I'm feeling to see how the process is enhanced within the HRA with the private nomination ballots. I understand that a couple have spoken in favor of that. It seems to me to be a continuation of the entire process of joining a board and moving from board membership to board leadership positions. So I, I heard what you said, but I'm having some difficulty in comprehending the the benefit of the change in the process.
Thank you, Commissioner Beloga. Are there any other comments or questions on this item?
Chair Thorson, Commissioner who?
Commissioner who came?
I just have to clear one thing. Thank you, Chair. With that, Jack had stated is that I recently applied for the HRA. But let's, I want to be clear on that, that that wasn't, it was a paper nomination to a, it was actually to, I want to say it was a secretary that the email went to or it was an online application. So it wasn't, I didn't go in front of public and say, I nominate myself or, or voiced it. It was a paper nomination of myself. So when we're talking about the paper nomination, that it's a very clear, similar situation that I, I nominated myself via the internet, via a piece of paper, basically. So it was not a voice nomination.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner, Commissioner Beloga. I'm a little, I'm a little slow sometimes to hit the mute and unmute. I apologize.
No problem. Vicky is correct that the self-nomination is a paper process. The transparency that I talked about comes about by that nomination form, that application gets included in the City Council package. So that is where I see the transparency is, is that the public also gets to see all the candidates who have self-nominated themselves for a particular board and commission. And, you know, their desires, their backgrounds, all the information that they share with City Council through that nomination also gets shared with the general public with the exception of some private information being addressed in telephone numbers and some of that kind of thing. So I think we're in agreement on the process. It's, it's how one views the transparency issue. And that is, is it's the public that the City Council wants to engage in transparency. Does that help?
Chair Thorson. Thank you, Jack. Yes, that does clarify. But I do think too that we would be putting the nominations on the next agenda as well. So it would be the exact same process as what the City Council does for a commissioner. So I think that it's actually sticking with a formality that's already in place and a continuation of how we're doing it. The only difference would be that we are not, or whether we do or don't do a voice vote at the end of the meeting, at the final meeting. Because the way the City Council does it is they go through and they discuss it and then they put there who they nominate for the position vocally versus if we decided to do it via either WebEx, paper or voice. But otherwise, it would be the same process that the council is currently doing for commissioners.
Thank you, Chair.
Hi, you're muted, Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. I, I, I may need some clarification. What Commissioner Beloga indicated was that when it comes in front of the council where the appointment is done in a, in a public meeting, which ours are as well for that matter, candidates are, on occasion, there is a process where there are interviews ahead of time. I don't know that they are, are public. I'm not even sure if they happen on a regular basis. But for example, when the Planning Commission candidates or park board or something like that were being considered, we met on Saturdays or whatever hours it worked for a large number of candidates. And so in our situation, we have nothing to indicate to the public through the nomination and selection process built in as to what the credentials or the history or the personality types or anything like that. So there's no, absolutely no transparency. It's just, it's just names that are, are, are being heard or seen by the public. And as I indicated at the beginning, maybe not as directly as I needed to be, but we are a very polarized nation right now. And so when people end up voting for somebody or nominating somebody, it's like all, right away, there's, there's a taking sides kind of process. And so I, I, that's why I believe that the process that had been proposed for twenty-twenty-one, and it can be an experimental year as far as I'm concerned, but I think it's, it's for that reason to me alone. The other, other reasons in terms of engagement, well, engagement, I think is pretty neutral across the ideas. But in terms of transparency, the amount of transparency we have had for the years that I've been involved with or observing HRA, I mean, if you were to take a, a poll of, of our population, I would say that the vast majority don't, don't have any idea what's going on, you know? So I'm not sure I'm articulating this really well, but I, I just think that given the mood in our nation, every little thing that we can do to move away from the idea of taking sides. You know, we are a very small commission we're talking about and I certainly would support expanding the numbers. We are not representative of many, many component parts of our city in terms of our residents. And so that, that's another topic. I shouldn't have brought that in there, but I'm, 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 I, I'm, I'm back to what I said before. I support the proposed procedure. And if I would make the motion, I would, I would probably do, should we do it as a, a trial year to see how it goes? Just because other, other boards have, have traditions and habits of doing it the same way doesn't mean that, that we have analyzed it as to whether it's the best way. It's not a, it's not a, who, who does it this way? I mean, if we keep doing things the way somebody else does it, we will never break out into, you know, creative new ways. And I think that's important too. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Right, Chair Thorson. In response to what's been said, here again, I'm not looking at other commissions to determine how we should do our election procedure. I am looking at what has worked in the past, what has been effective in the past and to the best of my knowledge was effective the last time we did it. If there's a reason that this has not been working and I did not know it wasn't working, then I would be happy to hear about it. You know, I would like to know the reason behind it. Otherwise, I don't understand how making, going to paper ballots or paper nominations is going to do, I mean, I, I understand the argument about, you know, our country is divided and seeing someone stand up and give a nomination or make a vote. I, it, to me, it doesn't relate with our commission. I feel that we have always been a very cooperative commission and the voting procedure has never been an issue before. And I guess that's my biggest problem. If when something isn't broken, I don't believe in fixing it. If there's a reason it needs to be fixed, I would like to understand that. I would like that explained to me why this came about. And I'm certainly open to new ideas. And if the majority of the board decides to support this proposal, I'm not going to say that I wouldn't. But I just feel like something that was working is now being changed and I don't understand why. And if it's not because we want to be consistent with other commissions, which based on what staff has told me, there were at least five commissions that were still doing voice votes and only three that had gone to the total paper nominations and votes. Then we're not even necessarily going with the majority of the commissions. So that's where I stand right now. If there's a reason that we need to change, I would like, you know, I would like to hear about it. I understand what Commissioner Olson said and yes, you know, you want to try new things. And yeah, I would look at maybe a trial year, but I'm not sure why we need a trial year. But here again, that's just my opinion. I'm, I'm willing to go with the majority on this, but I, I don't know why we're fixing something that doesn't appear to be broken. But that's all I have to say. I'll go with the group.
Thank you, Chair Thorson. If I could just speak.
Ms. Coleman, please.
So I just want to thank everyone for the discussion and just a, a couple of things. One, staff is not proposing that the process is broken per se and, and looking to fix it in the, that term. What is happening is What is happening is, one, it is evening the slate for those that may not have spoken up in the past about nominating themselves voice wise or being uncomfortable being put on the spot. That's just, that's my understanding of how a part of this came about. The other part is that there is a, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm new, so I'm forgetting the name, but there is a group within the city of Bloomington that is working to streamline processes with commissions when it comes to applications, interviews and time, timeframes and such, but it has to be brought to each commission because of bylaws and whatnot. So that is happening. And so what is just happening now is just bringing this forward to the HRA Commission and saying, as an option to include it in the bylaws, because bylaws must be updated if you choose to keep the same or change it. Bylaws actually need to be updated, right? So since that is coming forward, the option is to just have on paper, instead of you having to raise your hand or voice nominate yourself or somebody else, you're just putting that on paper anonymously. And so that's the difference. And I get what you're saying, Commissioner Lewis. And I, I hear you, Commissioner Beloga, as well as Commissioner Olson and Commissioner Houhim. I do hear and I do see the, the concerns and the issues and also the, the pros and cons as stated today. So I just wanted to bring that up. But it is completely your decision to make a motion, if you choose to make one and to vote on it. So that's where we are. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. I do have a question. I realize that a couple of folks here have indicated that, you know, we are in for, we as a board, or you, you have indicated the position that we as a board need to act in the manner that we think is right for this board and not necessarily look at what other commissions are doing. Having said that, I would ask Commissioner Beloga, City Council member Beloga, as well as Ms. Coleman, whether there has been any discussion at the city level of making, of recommending, because I realize each board might have to ask, depending on their statutory authority of the, of the board itself, whether or not the city is looking to create consistency among the commissions, specifically in how the, the leaders of the, in, in, are, are chosen. Is, and, and so that's question number one. And then question number two would be, you know, is, we are talking about strategic planning. We're talking specifically about a date in the future where we are going to really dig into those bylaws, consider the size of this board, consider things like that, what the makeup of the board might be in terms of trying to be more inclusive and all those kinds of things. And I, and it seems to me that this is a, a, a sign, the kind of a thing could be discussed at that time when we're, when we're looking at all aspects of the, of the HRA Board and its makeup and processes and procedures and bylaws. So just that comment there. And again, if you have any input, Commissioner Beloga or Ms. Coleman, as to whether or not there's a larger process, there was some indication by staff last time that commissions are somehow moving in a different direction. I haven't seen any of that here, but I'm just wondering whether or not there is a move afoot to create consistency among commissions on this very area of electing the chairs and vice chairs and so forth.
Thank you, Chair Thorson. The short answer to question number one is yes. There is a move afoot by, by the city that has not been formally presented to look at streamlining processes and consistency amongst the boards as that does get to engagement and transparency. So it does get to that pillar, which is informing that move. Number two, question number two or comment? Yes, absolutely. It could be done at a separate time before the annual meeting. So you want to make sure that you have ample time to have the discussion, to put it out to the public if you so choose in a manner, and then vote on a change, if you choose to have a change at a later date, but before the annual meeting takes place, which is in March. So to answer the second question, yes, does not have to happen this evening. It could be at a meeting in the very near future.
In my, and again, my suggestion was we do it at a time when we're looking at those bylaws and so forth. And you've, in, in response to question number one, does it not, if there is, I don't know how long term this process is of trying to streamline things among commissions, but the second question, it, it, you know, is, are we jumping the gun to make changes in this? And my, my greatest level of discomfort is, is around that transparency issue. I'm, I'm not quite sure I'm buying into the notion that somehow this is more transparent or equally as transparent what's being proposed by, by staff. So with that, Commissioner Beloga, I believe I saw your hand.
Mr. Chair. The question was addressed, as I understand it, is, is that has council directed any group within city to undertake a change in the process? And the best of my knowledge and recollections, we have talked about having the outlook and engagement group establish a process that may create greater diversity in candidates for boards and commissions and provide a consistent amount of base information to the council on candidates that we could weigh all applicants more fairly and fully to the board based upon a number of things and geographic distribution, equity, but mostly knowledge of the particular task that they would be assigned to complete as a result of a board or connection position. So we have not indicated that how the process of electing officers should be altered, although there has been discussions that were generated by our stating that there are inconsistencies between bylaws and actions that exist on various boards and commissions. And we, we know that, that's had, an example of that was addressed at the HRA when we looked at the contract between the city and the bylaws with respect to compensation and the, the process of whose employment and what rights each group has and so forth. So that's more of how I perceive the direction has been, rather than to say change a particular process, such as how you vote and how you nominate people for offices within those commissions.
Thank you, Commissioner Beloga. Commissioners, are there any other suggestions or comments or questions? I can't see if you want to speak up if you, if you have any further comments. I would, again, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about the transparency. I'm, I'm not fully, fully on board, I guess, myself with the, with the notion. I, in some ways, thinking really outside of the box, you know, I think that, I think nominations, I believe we could do in a manner that I believe people should feel comfortable nominating themselves. And I, I believe that nominee, I do think that the idea, I like the idea of separating nominations from an immediate vote, meaning nominations at one meeting and votes at the next. I do, I'm not opposed to private ballot on, on the votes necessarily. But I, I, you know, I, I would like to see transparency across the board, but I, I believe nominations are important. And again, thinking outside the box, you know, one approach might be, and, you know, call me crazy, but let's just say everybody is nominated. And then by the next meet, you know, there's a process by which people uncheck their name from chair, vice chair or secretary, or if they're not interested. Now, let's, let's go from the approach that everybody is, is throwing their hat in the ring unless they take action to say that they're not, and then we vote from that point. I don't know, but I just, I, I, I feel like we're making, as I look at these 10 items, I think we're dragging out a process a bit. And, and I feel like it's unnecessarily complicated, and it's less transparent than I would like to see personally. And so therefore, again, I, I, along perhaps with Commissioner Lewis, I, I asked a question, you know, I know there has been some discussion, but what are we hoping to accomplish here? But, you know, with that, I, you know, in terms of my vote, I'm, I'm open to change, but I'm not comfortable necessarily with what has been specifically proposed. And I also personally would like to see it when we discuss the bylaws themselves.
So, excuse me, Thorson? Thank you. So would you like to stay this item until a later date after the, the chance, the strategic planning meeting to discuss the bylaws? Or would you like to take a motion up around the recommended procedure with changes? That are the options today. To stay it, approve the recommended procedure as stated, or approve it, the recommended procedure with changes?
Certainly, I would say, I would recommend that we not take action on this item until we're at the point at which we're discussing the bylaws. But I recognize I'm only one vote on this. And so therefore, I, and I would be looking for any motion on the table, whether that motion is in favor of staff's recommendations or in favor of something different, or in favor of discussing this at a future date.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lewis.
I would move, I'm not sure how to word this motion, but I would move that we table this item or this item to be discussed at the meeting in which we are discussing our bylaws. I think that I would ask for some help on the wording of this amendment, if, if there is someone who could do a friendly amendment. I'm not quite sure how to put it, but I would like to table or move this item to when we discuss the bylaws.
Thank you, Chair Thorson. So that is a motion to not vote on the recommended procedures of the election of the HRA Commission officers and recommending that this vote be stayed until a future meeting of the discussion of the bylaws and future discussion of these items in particular.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman.
Ms. Coleman, do we have a, do we have a date certain for the discussion of the bylaws? I mean, realize that probably, that's probably going to be in one, one meeting as well, because we're making some fairly significant, well, we potentially could be making some fairly significant recommendations as part of that process. And so my guess is it's not going to be a single meeting. But do we have a, a date at which we're aiming for discussing bylaws?
Thank you, Chair Thorson. Yes, that is January 19th, the same date as the strategic planning session. That is next Tuesday.
Second to motion.
Chair Thorson, you've been on mute this whole time.
Thank you. I'll never, I may never get used to this. And then one person meeting, and I'll be looking for the mute and unmute button. Commissioner Beloga, it looks like you have your hand up.
I do. I could not hear Arisha's response. It, I, I'm having terrible audio. And when I tried dialing in, all I got was echoes. So I, you know, please, I'm, I'm asking everybody to hear what they have probably already heard before. But could you repeat yourself, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Thorson. Thank you, Commissioner Beloga. So repeating myself, I would say that the, right now, we have a date of January 19th for the strategic planning session. And in that session, we would also be looking at the bylaws. So any review, revision, updates, whatever you choose, we'd be looking at the bylaws, and that is next Tuesday, January 19th. And if you didn't hear the proposed motion for Commissioner Lewis, that is a motion to, sorry, because I didn't write it down, that is a motion to not make any change, many recommended procedure or changes to the election of the HRA Commission officers, to stay this item until we have the strategic planning session where we can discuss the bylaws and have further discussion to make a decision.
And Mr. Chair, I offered a second to that motion by. Thank you, I was just, again, I was slow to unmute. Yes, we have a motion by Lewis, second by Olson. Is there any further discussion before we take a roll call vote? Any further discussion? If not, I will do the roll call vote. Commissioner Beloga. Mr. Beloga. Commissioner Beloga? Did anyone hear a vote from Commissioner Beloga?
No.
All right, we're going to move on. Hopefully Commissioner Beloga can re-enter. Commissioner Houhim.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner, Chair Thorson is an aye. Beloga? Commissioner Beloga?
Mr. Chair, given Commissioner Olson suggests that given the, the technology problems, that maybe the vote can be recorded as 4:0 with, it wouldn't be an abstention, but unable to connect.
Yeah, I, I was thinking the same thing. Thank you, Commissioner Olson. And I'm not quite sure how we categories that, that one, but the motion has passed unanimously among those who were able to vote. I'm just going to just ask one more time for Commissioner Beloga to weigh in. Commissioner Beloga? All right, so motion passes, and we will move on to item 4.3. I believe this is information only, HRA Planning Session 2021.
Thank you, Erica Coleman, HRA Administrator. And so, yes, this is just informational that the HRA Board will have a strategic planning session to discuss and set forth a strategic plan for the HRA for the years of 2021 through 2023. So there's a three-year strategic plan, strategic plan. And the flow of the meeting will be And the flow of the meeting will be to discuss and set organization mission, vision, values, focus, and strategic initiatives. General Counsel will be present to talk through roles and responsibilities and review and update, if necessary, the H R A Board bylaws. The creation and recommendation of the 2021 work plan is expected to follow this session for a regularly scheduled H R A Board meeting in February 2021. So this, uh, meeting is important to have to set the focus, um, as the board to agree upon that. And then for staff to provide a 2021 work plan, um, after the board has set the focus and agreed upon that.
Thank you. Are there any question or comments, uh, regarding this item? Uh, and, uh, hopefully everybody will be able to make it to this important meeting. Um, it would be best if we all could. Um, on to item 5.1, Public Hearing and Approval of, of the 2021 Housing Choice Voucher, Section 8 Annual Plan and Administrative Plan. Could we have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chair, um, this, why did we bring forward to the, uh, Commission for the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program? Um, typically we bring this for you, forward to you in, uh, the early fall, but due to pandemic, uh, HUD has delayed the submission of our annual plan, uh, until January. So we have presented in, in the board packet, the, um, annual plan for the Section 8 program, which is a summary of the, uh, policies, programs, and operations of the program. We've also attached a copy of the administrative plan, which includes, includes no significant changes from last year. So there's not a whole lot that has changed from last year, um, with these two documents, but we do need to conduct a public hearing and take public comment. We have published for 45 days, um, a request for, uh, comments. We have received none as of, uh, this meeting. So, uh, that being said, looking forward to a public hearing and a motion of approval. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Hartman. Um, before I open the public hearing, are there any questions of staff on this item? If not, I will, uh, open the public hearing on, uh, item 5.1, uh, approval of the 2021 Housing Voucher, Section 8 Annual Plan and Administrative Plan. Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard on this item? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard on this item? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard on this item? If not, I would be looking for a motion to close the public.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Was that Commissioner Beloga?
It is.
No, Commissioner Beloga hasn't been here. Is that Commissioner Wilson? Do we have a second?
That made the motion.
It was Beloga. Beloga's back on? That's how it sounded like.
And Commissioner Lewis, second?
Okay, um, motion by Beloga? To close, and, and a second by Lewis to close the public hearing. I'm, I'll do the roll call vote. Beloga?
Aye.
Houhim?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
And Thorson is an aye, motion passes unanimously to close the public hearing. Uh, I would now look for a motion on the item itself.
Uh, Commissioner Houhim? Uh, I make a motion to approve the 2021 Housing Choice Voucher Annual Plan, Certifications and Administrative Plan for Submission to the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Commissioner Olson, do we have a second?
Commissioner Olson makes a second?
Motion by Houhim, second by Olson. Uh, will now do the roll call vote. Beloga?
Aye.
Houhim?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
And Thorson is an aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. On to item 6.1, H R A Programs Update.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Uh, Commissioner Beloga?
Um, I just, just want to let you know the status. The internet at, I'm in, uh, Arizona and the internet has gone down here totally. So I'm dialed in using, uh, cellular services. So I cannot see any of the presentation material, but I do have audio. So I just wanted to make you aware of what's occurring on this.
Uh, thank you. And I'm, I'm hoping people can see me. My screen just disappeared. I'm out to the main page. It says join meeting. So you might see two of me. I'm not quite sure what's going on here. Can people hear me right now?
Yes, we can see you. Your video is on.
Okay. All right. This is, uh, strange because there's really only one window open. So I may be conducting the rest of this meeting blindly, but there isn't much left. Uh, could we have the, uh, Programs Update, please, from staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Brian Hartman. Um, as was, uh, outlined in previous meetings, we are presenting to you a program update at the first meeting of the month and a project update at the second meeting of your, uh, of the month. Um, so tonight's, uh, program update, just a few items, uh, that I wanted, um, mentioned. Most importantly, and I'm glad Mr., uh, or Councilmember and Commissioner Beloga is on the call and thank him for his strong support from the City Council last night that has approved $600,000 in strategic priorities funding from the city to the H R A for our neighborhood loan program. As you know, this program, um, was, uh, suspended last fall because of lack of funding. Um, and this will, uh, allows us to, and we have opened up for new applications for the loan program. And we're very excited to go forward and do that work. So again, thank you for your leadership, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Beloga and Councilmember Beloga. Um, I think that's just terrific news for, um, not only the H R A, but this, you know, the homeowners and, and have been waiting to apply for our program. Secondly, um, another great, uh, set of news is that due to our budget that has been approved by the Congress and approved by the President, we are, uh, have in receipt of our funding for 2021. And we are assured of, uh, amount of funding that will allow us to issue new vouchers this year. Um, we are inviting 20 families off our waiting list, um, and inviting them for new vouchers. Um, so this is the first time we'll be issuing new Section 8 vouchers since the, the, the end of 2019, actually. So it's been over a year since we've had people on our waiting list. So this is terrific news. Um, at our next meeting, uh, we're, hopefully we'll have representatives from senior community services here to talk about their program, the home program that serves seniors, helps them keep the, uh, them in their home through chore services and housekeeping. Um, they will, we are updating the contract they have with the H R A right now with legal counsel and will bring them back. Um, it's always good to visit Deb Taylor, those folks, and, uh, understand the good work that they do. And lastly, we've had initial meetings with, um, the auditors that are on site, virtually I should say. Uh, we've had meetings with them, uh, for the audit of the 2020, uh, fiscal year, uh, which just ended at the end of December. Um, they will be determining which programs the H R A ministers in which to audit. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hartman. Great report. And I, and I, 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 I'm with you on the, uh, vote of thanks to Commissioner, uh, to Councilmember Beloga for his support of the, uh, of, uh, the program. So, um, that is, that is great news. Um, any, um, any questions of staff on, uh, the items presented in the staff report? Any questions? If not, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Commissioner Olson moves that we adjourn the meeting.
Commissioner Lewis, you're muted.
Commissioner Lewis, second.
All right, we have a motion by Olson, second by Lewis to adjourn the meeting. Again, for the roll call vote, Beloga?
Uh, I am, uh, thank you for the kind words to, uh, both yourself, uh, Mr. Chair and to Brian Hartman.
Thank you. Commissioner Houhim?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
And Thorson is an aye, motion passes unanimously, uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you all.